Okay, we're gonna call this regular meeting of the City Council and WPCA to order. For the record, today is Tuesday, January 16th, 2024. And we are participating, it's a hybrid meeting, so participating in person in the City Hall auditorium are Councilwoman Spino and Councilwoman Ruette. And participating via Zoom, we have Councilman Waldron and Councilman Cavanero. That is our quorum, so I can officially call this meeting to order. Before we get into the agenda, could we please stand and pledge the flag?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on nation under God, in the name of our freedom and justice for all.
Okay. Item number one on the agenda, I'll entertain a motion to open the meeting to the public in accordance with Section 4, Subsection E of the City Council and WPCA Meeting Rules of Procedure.
Some of them.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino, seconded by Councilwoman Ruette. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And we're open to the public. Anyone from the public wishing to address the council? Seeing none, I'll move on to item two. I'll entertain a motion to accept the regular meeting minutes from January 2nd, 2024.
Some of them.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino, seconded by Councilwoman Ruette. Questions or comments on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Aye.
Oh, an abstention.
Abstention.
Do you have any abstentions?
Yes.
An abstention for Councilman Cavanero. So moving on to item number three. I'll entertain a motion to appoint Frank Baba as an alternate zoning board of appeals member to fill the remainder of the term set to expire on December 1st, 2028.
Some of them.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino.
Second.
And I heard Councilman Cavanero. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And four, I'll entertain a motion to appoint Linda Kowalzak as a regular member of the Co-Memorial Park Committee to fill a remaining term set to expire on December 31st, 2024.
Some of them.
Councilwoman Spino, seconded by Councilman Waldron. Questions or comments on this appointment? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item five, I will entertain a motion to authorize the mayor to execute and amend the union contract with United Public Surface Employees Union, that's UPSU Local 424, Unit 78, dated July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2024, as further explained in the Director of Human Resources Memo dated January 9th, 2024.
Some of them.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino, seconded by Councilwoman Ruette. Are there questions on this? I would only add that I spoke with Joel Sikorski over the weekend, and he is particularly delighted to have this additional position made to help give him some relief in managing everything from grants. Mr. Cavanero, you have a question?
Yes, I do. Could you, again, could you just briefly go over the rationale for doing this? When you say that this position, it was the goal of the city to have this position available to support the needs associated with confidential negotiation matters, how does this facilitate that?
So always when dealing with union positions, the union is always reluctant to lose union positions.
Right, I know.
And while we recognize that this deputy comptroller's position really does deal with confidential information, particularly when it comes to contract negotiations or budget development. So we went to UPSU and we said, we'd like to remove this position from the union role. However, we knew that in our Sullivan Senior Center, we were dealing with a number of part-time positions which were very difficult to fill. And there was an opportunity to create a full-time position that would fall under the supervisors' union, and they wouldn't lose a position within their rank. So it was a one-to-one, you know, they agreed that was a confidential position in the finance department, and they would be winning, or not winning, excuse me, they would be held harmless in their reduction of union membership when we created the new position.
Did the rank and file of the union approve this?
They did, yes.
Okay, all right. Fair enough. Yes, I'm fine, thank you.
Yeah, it also goes to the, always the goal is a succession plan. You know, a succession plan in finance department, a succession plan in the Sullivan Senior Center, you know, bringing in those highly qualified people that can step into those supervisory roles somewhat seamlessly. So I really think this was a very good move, and appreciate the union's cooperation in helping make it happen.
Fair enough, thank you, ma'am.
All right, so the motion was made by Councilwoman Spino, seconded by Councilwoman Ruette. If there are no other questions, I'll call the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. All right, now I need to add a Section B for this evening's meeting. I need two-thirds affirmative, so three of you would have to vote in favor of adding this to the agenda. The motion is to add Section B, an interest arbitration award for the Torrington Firefighters Association Local 1567. Do I have a motion?
Some of them.
All right, I heard Councilwoman Ruette, seconded by Councilman Waldron. All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor, thank you. So the motion that I'm looking for is, I'll entertain a motion to acknowledge and authorize the acceptance of the interest arbitration award, case number 2022 MBA 176, and to authorize the mayor to sign the amended union contract agreement between Local 1567, IAFF, AFLCIO, and the City of Torrington, 2021 through 2024. This is further explained in the Director of Human Resources Memo dated January 11th, 2024. Do I have that motion?
Some of them.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Ruette. The floor is open for questions. If there are no questions, I'll call the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, then I, just for those of you that are participating via Zoom, we do have union leadership here, and I will sign that contract with them right after we convene. Moving on to item six. I'll entertain a motion to adopt resolution number 143246 to authorize the mayor to sign a personal services agreement for $40,625. This is a grant for the installation of three dual-pore EV charging stations to be located at City Hall, Franklin Street, and Riverview parking lots, as further explained in the Public Works Director's Memo dated January 2nd, 2024. Thank you, Councilwoman Spino, and seconded by Councilwoman Ruette. Questions on this motion?
Baby girl.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item seven, I'll entertain a motion to authorize the mayor to act on behalf of the city to award, execute, and administer a contract agreement for the polishing of the concrete floors at the Public Works Garage in favor of American Poly of Berlin, Connecticut, in the amount of $14,160, as further explained in the facilities manager's memo dated January 9th, 2024.
Some of them.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino.
Second.
And seconded by Councilman Waldron. Questions on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item eight, I'll entertain a motion to accept the commissioner's training report for the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Zoning Board of Appeals for the 2023 calendar year, as further described in the City Planner's Memo dated January 4th, 2024.
Some of them.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino, seconded by Councilwoman Ruette. Questions?
So this is a new statute that requires this four-hour plan?
It is, yes, for commissioners. So it's not enough that you volunteer, now you have to be trained volunteers?
That was my point.
Yes.
You know, I don't know if they consider that, but it would have been nice to at least give them some compensation for the training. Help with recruitment for people to serve on these boards and commissions.
Yeah. I would agree, you know, and so many of these commissions are being charged with weightier decisions or weightier issues. Fair Rent Commission is a prime example. This is a commission that you really just can't rely on, you know, volunteers using common sense. They really do need to be trained. So I would agree. I'm not sure that the state will ever come up with funding to do that. They call those unfunded mandates, I guess. So we have to find the funding to make that happen. And I will tell you, CCM has done a pretty good job when they recognize that there's a demand for a higher level of competency. CCM usually does try to assemble some opportunities. So I could reach out to CCM and see if they're gonna be doing anything. Other questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item nine, I'll entertain a motion to accept the Building Department report for the month of December 2023.
Some of them.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Ruette. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 10, I'll entertain a motion to release the liens listed on Corporation Council's Memo dated January 16th, 2024.
Some of them.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Waldron. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 11, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the tax collector and authorize the tax refunds indicated on the list dated January 16th, 2023.
Some of them.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino, seconded by Councilman Waldron. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 12, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the tax collector and authorize the sewer use refunds indicated on the list dated January 16th, 2024.
Some of them.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino, seconded by Councilman Waldron. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 13, I'll entertain a motion, consider business by department heads.
Some of them.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino. Seconded by Councilwoman Ruette. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We can go to the room. Mr. Farley, anything from the treasurer's office?
Yeah, just quickly, I just want to give you an update on what we call the cannabis tax. So the legislature passed a law last year requiring the cannabis retailers to put aside 3%, which the City of Torrington needs to collect from them. And that 3%, those funds need to be used for certain items. We could use them for improvements to streetscapes, neighborhood developments in and around each community, can fund educational programs or youth employment programs, fund services for released individuals from corrections, probation, parole, or residing in municipality, mental health and addiction services, fund youth service bureaus, fund efforts to promote civic engagement. And in case those payments aren't made in a timely fashion, they've got 30 days after we invoice them. There's a penalty that they imposed of either 25% or $250, whichever is more. And in two instances, we did impose a 25% penalty, and that totaled close to $7,400. So when that, when those funds came in, the question came up in our department, you know, how do we handle those? Are they part of the tax money that we're getting? Or can they be considered for other projects or things that we might consider being beneficial? Or just put it in our revenue account? So I reached out to the state, and the state, as far as the individual that I spoke with, felt that those funds that we take in from delinquent payments can be used at our discretion. So I forwarded that email to the mayor and Attorney Magistrally. Attorney Magistrally is in agreement with that. So we'll plan, it'll be up to the mayor, of course, to determine where those funds will go. So we got about $7,400 so far. Since March, when our collection started for the cannabis tax, we've now taken in $114,000 in that account. And that's, March was only a partial month because the retail establishment didn't open until, I think, halfway through that particular month. We estimated, or the mayor asked me, I estimated we were gonna take in conservatively $100,000 over a 12-month period. It looks like we're going to get close to, we probably hit $150,000 in this 12-month period. So those funds will be available for those projects that are designated by the state. Lastly, our process for bonding is begun for our next bonding project for next, this coming spring, if needed. I've already started the work, our official statement is, we have to have that completed by the end of this month. So I've got my work cut out for me, but it looks like the department heads are getting me the information quicker than I've ever gotten it. So that's gonna help in the process. That's it.
I have a question about the 3% tax. So that's going into just our general, what you're talking about in terms of discretionary? Are the penalties, or am I?
No, the pen, the-
$100,000 going towards our tax?
$150,000 has to be utilized for those programs that the state said those money needs to go towards.
Okay, so when, could you identify them again? Does it include public safety? It seems to me-
No, it does not.
No. So during the budget, during the budget process, what we did is, the statute says that this is general fund revenue, and that we should do our best efforts to budget expenses that qualify for the statute that Mr. Farley just read off for you. So budget development, we were basing it on very little information, only a couple months' tax revenue collection, and we budgeted $100,000. That's in the Boards and Agencies Department. And against the $100,000, the expenses that we budgeted were PAL program, the Torrington Youth Service Bureau, those are qualified expenses. And then left a dollar amount that was the difference between those two budgeted line items to be spent as a budget adjustment with the approval of the council, you know? And the police department said, we'd like to bring back the DARE program. So that'll be an opportunity for me to come back to the council and say, DARE program's another $20,000, and there's sufficient revenue to cover that. So general fund revenue specifically spent on what's written into the statute, exclusive of the penalty for late payment. So as you heard, Dan said, we're looking now at about $150,000 against the $100,000 we budgeted. So at the end, plus $7,7400 in late payments right now. These funds must be spent consistently with the statute. So at the end of the budget year, the excess revenue that gets collected will go into a non-lapsing kind of a reserve account, capital reserve account. And we'll come back to the council with a recommendation as to how to spend those additional funds. But going into the next budget development cycle, I think we'll have a better idea of what that revenue is, and try our best to account for expenses closer to what we believe that revenue will be.
So I hate to be repetitive, but could you identify those, those areas again that's indicated in the statute?
Sure. Permitted use of tax, make improvements to streetscapes and other neighborhood developments in and around each community. Number two, fund educational programs or youth employment programs. Number three, fund services for released individuals from corrections, probation, or parole, and residing in municipality. Number four, mental health and addiction services. Number five, fund youth service bureaus. And last, number six, fund efforts to promote civic engagement.
Some of them are broad, particularly the last one. But, you know, I hope that we are somewhat creative in this, in an opportunity. And I appreciate the fact that the council will be involved with some of the decisions.
Just as you were in last budget cycle, yes. In the last budget cycle, we specifically said what we were gonna spend that fund, those funds on, and the council did approve that. With the surplus, to be honest with you, I'm inclined to say, if there's surplus, and particularly if there's a penalty that's charged, that we could also sink into that, into that reserve account, as opposed to it just falling into the fund balance at the end of the year. It's, it exceeded, it could just fall to fund balance. Or we could move those funds also into the capital reserve and spend them consistently with what the statute dictates. I would think that street scape improvements or development projects would make sense. Parks, some capital improvements in the community. I know that there are a couple of grant opportunities where a little extra money put towards those grant improvements could give us a more robust project at the end of it. But absolutely, the council would be the one, as opposed to the Board of Finance, because once it gets moved into the capital reserve, it's the council's decision as to how those funds are spent. And we would bring back a proposal. That proposal, however, isn't gonna happen until after June 30th, for obvious reasons. We still have four more months of revenue to collect, and assuming that there's no more late penalties, we'll have a better picture of what those are.
Yeah, I think, in my opinion, just, you know, as you're going through the budget process, is that if, you know, if it's city, if it's one of our parks or recreation department, but if it's outside the agency allocated to an organization, I think it should be an RFP. Oh, yeah, I agree.
Yeah. No, particularly if that's, you know, when you talk about mental health and addiction services, I would agree. And it may come to the point where the council will say, we'd like to establish a mini-grant program, to your point, that can be done, and that would be a grant, RFP, or grant application process.
Thank you.
Yeah, I agree, that's a really good idea. Other questions or comments for Mr. Farley? And the only other thing I was thinking is if you wanted to let the council know about the staff changes in your department.
Okay, so, yeah, we've got a comptroller, a new comptroller, John Monks, that started the beginning of December. We have a new deputy comptroller, Olivia DeRosa, who started a week or two ago.
Yeah.
We have a new budget director, she started, I believe, in November. And we have a new payroll person coming on board, I think in another week or so. So our department's getting back to some normalcy, thank God. We're still looking for an accounts payable person. But we still have a, we're utilizing an agency with a temp that's helping us get through that right now, but we need to get that taken care of. But things are moving in the right direction.
Thank you, Mr. Farley. No questions? Thank you. Chief Board, and anything from the fire department this evening? No? Jamie Sikora, anything, facilities director? Mr. Cody? Except that your crews were out at midnight and 2:00 a.m., and back out 3:00 a.m. today, so the schools can open. Thank you, yeah, it's good work. Mr. Drew? Nothing? You don't want to talk about the EV charging stations?
I have a question. You know, as I said, we're looking at the installation of three dual ports. At one at Franklin Street, one at the new Riverview Park, Riverview parking lot, which is due to start construction here this spring, redevelopment with the trail and the redevelopment of that parking lot. And then one at the Franklin Plaza parking lot. It was really a kind of a no-brainer for us. And with the BW EVSE grant, the $120,000 energy incentives from EverSource, we did get bid proposals. You know, the project is estimated $182,000, Contractor Innovus, as well as the software manufacturer, Switch Energy. Their proposal was $153,000, so that leaves us a little leverage for contingencies and anything else that might come up. So this could potentially be a zero-cost investment. So that's EV chargers. So we're hoping to get them up and running, get the grant paperwork finalized with the resolution, I think was the last piece that we needed to get in place. And then we'll get that finalized. We already have Innovus and Switch on board, so I think they're eager to get ready this spring.
Thank you. Anything from the City Clerk's office? All right, we'll move into item 14. I'll entertain a motion to consider business by the mayor and members.
Some of them.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Ruette, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We'll go to the room, Zoom room first. Anything this evening, Councilman Waldron?
Uh, no, nothing from me, ma'am, thank you.
Councilman Cavanero?
Nothing from me, ma'am, thank you.
Councilwoman Ruette?
Just that we are planning an ordinance committee meeting on February 5th at 6 o'clock. And the, at least the goal of the chair at this point is to look at ordinances that are on the books and some that we might be able to actually eliminate. So I've talked with Sergeant Boltis and certainly our Public Works Director about any of those ordinance that might be under our oversight to look at, to see if we can put them up, clean it up. So Molly Spino's joined our ordinance committee, as well as Councilman Cavanero. Good year.
Thank you. Councilwoman Spino?
I have nothing tonight, ma'am.
All right, the only thing that I, just as I was listening to Mr. Drew talk about the EV charging stations and grant, and I just wanted to let the council know that Ray and Paul Cousins and Richard Lopez from our Economic Development Office did tour the Railroad Square Grant Project with members of DECD, Kimberly Parsons Whitaker, and Melinda. Oh, that's terrible, yeah. It was supposed to be Matt Puglies, but Matt Puglies got promoted to the deputy commissioner position. But they did a great job for the city, helping to explain how that project fits in context to everything else that the city is doing with the Hotchkiss Mill development, with the Midgen Avenue Road Construction Trail Development, with Christmas Village Parking Lot- road construction, trail development with Christmas Village Parking Lot, with Franklin Products Parking Lot improvements, and the platform for the railroad. So it was great to have such strong representation, explaining to the state that everything we do is very planful. You know, it's not just a one-off, you know, pick a project. It was in context with everything that we've been working on for the last four or five years, so thank you very much, Ray. Move into item number 15. I'll entertain a motion to open the meeting back to the public for comment on agenda items only.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Rowett, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Anyone from the public wishing to address the council? Seeing and hearing none, moving into the item 16. There being no further business before the board, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino, seconded by Councilwoman Rowett, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.
Thank you.